The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the special meeting of the Plainville Town Council. Today is Thursday, October 15th at 6:00 PM. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I will have Councilwoman Maranti lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you can see, I have my mask off, and that's typically what I do when I begin the council meetings, and if there's any time during the meeting, I will be speaking. I'll remove it just for ease of understanding and projection, so that's the process I'll be using this evening. We have some proposals that were sent over to the Town Council regarding the development of the White Oak property, and that is the only topic on our agenda this evening. What I would like to do is ask our town manager, Robert Lee, to give a preview of where we've come and what we're going to be doing, and he will be introducing the first presenter. So, Robert, if you would please, go ahead.
Thank you very much. The Town of Plainville has been working with the owners of the White Oak property, which is adjacent to the municipal center, for about, probably about two years now. And this is a property that was used as a construction site for many years, has been out of business probably for about 15, maybe 20 years, and there were some limitations with regards to contamination of the site as a result of the previous business. The Town has worked with the property owner in the state of Connecticut to access some grant funds from the state, which allowed us to do some examination and study of what it would take to clean up the property, and that study has been completed. We have a lot of information with respect to that. Recently, we, the Town, went out and advertised for proposals for the development of the property, and we received two proposals, one by Damato, what we're calling Damato and Myers, as a partnership, and another one was with Manafort and others as well. This evening, we were allocating about an hour for each presentation. The Council has previously, we distributed copies of the proposals, and this evening is the opportunity for the developers to give their presentation, both to the Town of Plainville Town Council and to the, you know, and to the public at large. And we've allocated about an hour for each one. First one would be Damato Myers. And at this point in time, I'd like to ask Tony Damato to step forward, introduce his team, and proceed with the presentation. We, like I said, about an hour, maybe a half hour for the presentation, and a half hour for questions, and then move on to the next presentation. So, with that in mind.
Thank you, Robert.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, from the Plainville Town Council and others. My name is Anthony Damato, the Operations Manager at Damato Construction. I'm also going to, when I'm speaking and presenting, going to remove my mask and remain with the mask off until I am done, and then I will obviously socially distance and maintain my distance away from others. I'd like to introduce the rest of our team. We have Kyle Macarello. He's head of our Real Estate and Asset Management Operations.
Chris Meyer, Meyer Enterprises. I've met someone before. Nice to see you again.
And that's basically the team. So, we went ahead and combined forces to provide you, I think, maybe a little bit of an unorthodox proposal based on, you know, the contents of the RFP, but we thought that it was noteworthy and worthwhile to submit the proposal and explain it to you and to answer your questions tonight. So, we'll move on here. The team, the team is Damato Construction and Meyer Enterprises together. We are looking to coexist on the former White Oak property, and we'll get into how we plan on doing that as we move along. Just a little bit about Damato Construction. We're a family company. We were established in 1961. We're obviously based, since our inception, in the city of Bristol. We have 45 employees, both in our administration, corporate management, and field operations. We are a construction manager and general contractor that does state, municipal, private, a whole host of different types of work product, you know, as a CM and a general contractor. We also have a real estate brokerage and development arm. We do commercial and multifamily residential development as well, as well as commercial asset and property management, which Kyle Macarello heads that division up for us. And Chris, I don't know if you want to...
Sure. So, Meyer Enterprises was started in 1999. I had a small warehouse in Newington, Connecticut, and I've opened multiple warehouses, Chicago, California. We also run a trucking business besides our metal distribution. The trucking business has grown quite a bit more. It does dedicated freight, and I was traveling between multiple locations in Connecticut where we do have trucks. That's kind of how I came to Plainville. And five years ago, I bought the property on the corner next to Bailey's Funeral Home, the little brown place where my office is with my secretary, and we've been cleaning it up and keeping it brown because everyone seems to call it the Brown House. So, that being said, what our plan is, is to bring more of the employees into one location. Working out of multiple locations is a logistical problem. So, that's what we do, trucking, metal distribution, and we pull that up into one location.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Kyle, do you want to, you want to do the idea? You want to start?
Sure. Again, my name is Kyle Macarello. I'm with the real estate side of the Damato family. I've had the pleasure to be working for them for the last 15 years across three generations, which all come to work every day. I'm no stranger to the Town of Plainville. My family owned a business here for 40 years, Plainville Hardware, so I grew up here during the weekends and every summer day, so I've had that identity crisis, am I from Southington or if I'm from Plainville. I did serve on the Town Council in Southington for six years, many years ago, so I appreciate the opportunity and kind of understand your side of the table and the deliberations of this presentation and potentially your consideration. Tony Damato also served on the City of Bristol Town Council, and so we both appreciate your time. The idea is pretty simple. We've been looking for a new location for the Damato property, the field and administrative offices within the city of Bristol for many years. We had purchased a property which we thought was going to be our destination. Lo and behold, the 11th hour, the property owner said, "Well, the existing tenant is not going to leave or extend their lease, and they're going to sublet it to Amazon." So, we are the landlords now of Amazon's first last mile distribution center in Connecticut. They don't plan on leaving anytime soon. It's one of their highest volume locations, so that took us away from our sites on that property, looking elsewhere. We couldn't find anything that really works for us. The opportunity for this proposal came forth. We got together with Chris. We looked at cohabitation on this property, and we feel that it would be, it would work for us. Leaving Bristol is going to be tough for the Damato family, not so much for myself, but for the Damato family because of all the years and roots that they have in Bristol, but we're looking for the future of the business. We're looking for the third and fourth generation on where we can continue to develop this business, and we need the land. We need the parcel. We feel that we have a complimentary use from its former occupant. We would come in and relocate our offices, all our heavy equipment. We've got some slides to show you, our yard, and we think that it's a viable opportunity. We do plan on improving the property in the sense where we would build an approximate 35,000 square foot addition to one of the outbuildings for our shop, which we think that would be between a $3 and $5 million venture for us, including some of Chris's improvements and the yard improvements in general. The front of the property, the one West Main Street property, would be not changed. The street level appearance to that would be enhanced the way it is, but we feel that the significance, historical significance of the building would remain intact. We would complement it with basically just our name and Chris's name. We would support the Phase 3, which I know it's a long time coming, the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail project, in any way that we can support it so that it could benefit the Town in general, whether it traverses across the property, whether it has any type of presence on the property. We'd be more than happy to support that effort.
Thank you. So, now we'll get into some of the mechanics of how we envision, and I just want to be very, leave a little caveat to this. This is very preliminary. We understand that anything, you know, that if we were to move forward and if we were to be selected, we would go through the proper channels of planning and zoning and all of the necessary, you know, authorities having jurisdiction, but this is our basic first crack layout of how the property would work. So, we do have, I have my laser pointer here, this little blue block up here, the blue block you'll see in the middle, that's the proposed 35,000 square foot additional structure. Basically, the existing building, it has great bones. It serves the highest and best use for us, but unfortunately, it's not big enough, so we would have to do some sort of capital improvement, whether it's this additional structure or multiple additional structures to house the fleet repair and administrative operations of our business. The two areas highlighted in green, that is where Meyer Enterprise would locate on the site. We would have some sort of a demarcation in the site, so that way we could share the parcel, but yet we would be, both be autonomous, both autonomous businesses on the site. So, that's the, and the gray shaded area around the remaining property is where we would park our heavy equipment, our medium duty equipment, our light duty equipment, our staff vehicles, and other equipment that we would not generally store inside. And with that being said, you know, the word "equipment" and "heavy equipment" usually, you know, scares a lot of different people on, "What does that look like? How big is it? How much of it? Am I going to see it from the street? You know, are we going to shade it in? Are we, are we going to, you know, cause detriment to the look of, you know, your downtown, which obviously the town manager and you, the Council, are trying to elevate, you know, as a whole? So, we put together what, I'm sorry, we put together what we're calling a, I'm sorry about that, a block plan. So, don't want to spoil the show too early here. So, their block plan, you have the maroon shaded area, which would be the heavy equipment storage area. If you're facing the front of that building from the main street, that is the least visible area from the street, so we would, we would park the heaviest equipment, the biggest equipment in that area, and work our way towards, you know, the right side of the picture and get smaller as we go. The building has a, creates like a natural veil and privacy shield to the back of the parcel, which we understand that moving forward, if we do move forward, that that's going to be a point of contention, a point of concern, and we want to show you that preliminary, we're already looking at that and looking at ways to solve that. So, as we move from the left to the right, we start with heavy equipment, medium duty equipment, small stockpile of consumable goods, staff vehicles, as well as the, you know, Meyer operations, which is small trucks and flatbeds and things that are more appealing than some of our heavy equipment. Obviously, when Mr. Macarello here mentioned about street level work, we would focus on potted-type landscaping, landscaping on the corners and the edges in the property where applicable to enhance the street level view of the building to offset, you know, the operations that would potentially occur in the back. To get into the next major concern, which usually concerns any type of municipality, is the traffic. What kind of traffic are we going to cause? How are we going to approach, enter the facility, the hours of operation? We're a 24-hour business. Most of our operations happen during the normal business day, you know, 6:00 AM to 5:00 at night. We have two entrances to this property, so you'll see the red arrows. That brings us all the way where we would use that entrance for Meyer Industries, as well as 100% of Damato's heavy equipment, transportation, and all of that type of equipment. And the small entrance that's closer to the Town Hall facility would be for visitation, visitors, and staff automobiles that would, you know, you would see in a typical parking lot. So, we want to be cognizant of how close we are. The farther to the right of the property, the closer we are to the heart and the epicenter of the downtown, and we wish to remain cognizant of that and push as much of the other type of undesirable traffic farther to the left and away from, you know, your walkable downtown. So, that's very preliminary. Obviously, again, we would approach the authorities having jurisdiction, as well as your boards and commissions, to do the proper due diligence and come up with a compromise that works for Damato and Meyer and the Town of Plainville. I'll just going to get into some of the benefits of this proposal. We put together on the surface what we think is a benefit to the Town of Plainville. We have an expansion of an existing business in Plainville, Meyer Enterprises, and we have the potential relocation of a business that you don't have in Plainville, Damato Construction. So, that would do quite a few things. The first thing we're looking at is upon environmental cleaning, and we'll get into that a little later, of the property, and we were able to take the property with a clean title, we would propose a lump sum payment of $650,000 for the property at the time of closing. So, that would put funds in the Town's hands upfront, front-loaded. That would be in addition to any of the, you know, annual taxes that we would pay that would be assessed on the property. And as we grow with, you know, the potential new structure, the equipment that would move, you know, into the Town of Plainville, we would obviously expand Town of Plainville's ability to tax our equipment and, you know, other structures. So, we see this as an opportunity for the Town of Plainville to, you know, see some upfront money in the near term and increase tax revenue in the long term. And also, this is just an investment in the Town of Plainville. This would be an investment in your people, you know, in your, in your daily lives. We would enter the community and support all of the community organizations, as we do in Bristol. We would carry that tradition into the Town of Plainville, which is also an added benefit, you know, for the municipality. What does that do further for benefits? Well, that brings over 50 jobs that would either be expanded or relocated to the Town of Plainville. Those jobs, you know, work and show up to work every day. They work in an office. They work in the field. They would frequent your downtown businesses for breakfast, lunch, dinner, other businesses in town. There's a lot of economic spend that comes out of relocating, you know, those jobs to the Town of Plainville on a daily basis. We'd also be a partner in your economic development. You know, your priorities would become our priorities as well, and we would go ahead and bolster our ability to assist the Town in whatever those priorities may be if we decide to, you know, relocate to the Town of Plainville. And, you know, we're not going to be bashful. We're not going to be stuck up. We're not going to talk about ourselves, but, you know, we're good citizens. We're good corporate citizens. We're a good group of people that when we say something, we do something. When we mean it, we mean it. And, you know, we're all-around good people that could complement all the other good corporate citizens that you have in town, and we would be, we would think that we would make a great addition to, you know, an already good group of people that you have, you know, in the Town of Plainville. So, those are the high-level benefits that I see, and we, do you want to get into the timeline, or you want me to do it?
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's, now, forgive me, this is a little small, but we took a crack at what we think is probably one of the most important things here outside of cleaning the property is, how long is this going to take? What's their timeline? So, we took a, based on our knowledge base of past and similar deals with, you know, environmental concerns and the like, we've come up what we call our preliminary timeline, and we know this is subject to change based on the aggressiveness of the Town and the availability of funds that you would use to clean the property, but we're obviously here in October. The first note on the left, we're presenting our request for proposal. We envision potentially that the cleanup of the property would begin sometime in January 2021. Running concurrently with said cleanup, we would also start our site plan and zoning with the AHJs and boards and commissions around March 2021. We are hoping and envisioning the cleanup concluding on around June 2022, which would lead us into the purchase the very next month in July 2022. Then, we would start to see some activity on the property. Meyer Enterprises would begin their expansion on the property somewhere about October 2022, and we have a little bit more of a logistical nightmare, but we would envision starting our relocation sometime early 2023. So, that's our first crack at a, you know, preliminary timeline, and stress the word preliminary, but it gives, you know, the folks in the Council an idea of what they could expect if we were to be selected. And that is our presentation, so we're sure that folks have questions, and we'd love to answer them to the best of our ability with what we have, and again, you know, we look forward to any questions that you may have. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your information, and I'm wondering if you could provide your slide presentation to the Towns that the Council could have...
You took the words right out of my mouth.
Either electronically...
That was my next step, as I have hard copies for you. I will pass out, Kyle will pass out right now. We wanted to hold those to the end to capture your attention during the presentation, but we have a, what we call a firm overview of Damato. Our group of companies explains what we do in further detail. We also have a firm overview of Meyer Industries, as well as some, a copy of the presentation for you here tonight that you can mark up and take your necessary notes. So, Kyle's going to go around and pass those around.
Great. Thank you very much for doing that.
You're welcome.
So, before we go further with our next presenter, I'm going to ask the Council, would you prefer to ask questions now, or do you want to wait until both presentations have been given to us and then ask questions thereafter? What is your preference?
I'd rather ask questions now.
Have the questions now? Okay. Everybody else is in agreement with that? Question now? You want to wait?
I have one that wants to wait.
Either way, okay, so...
Thank you.
Rosemary, what is your...
I have a question.
Now? Okay. So, we'll go ahead and have our questions now. We have, again, we appreciate your coming and meeting with us and presenting to us your concept for the White Oak property development. As we all know, it's been sitting pretty quietly for a great many years. It's a, it's a central location in the Town of Plainville. The Town Council has, for a number of years, been paying attention to it and deliberating about what to do about it, and we've finally come to a point where we can start to look at some ideas for actual real movement forward. So, thank you, and I would include the Manafort team as well. I know you're going to be coming up, but appreciate all of you coming this evening to share your thoughts and ideas. So, what I'll do right now is open it up for questions from the Council for the Damato and Meyer presentation. Does anybody have anything they'd like to ask?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Just, you mentioned, how many trucks in general would be on the property in any given day? And it can be general. You don't, I don't expect specific.
Yeah, so, you know, that's, it does vary because of the type of operation we're in. Depending on our backlog and our workload, that could change, but to give you an idea of what we have, which would really never be on the property at one time, but we have over 85 pieces of heavy and medium duty equipment, that obviously wouldn't fit on the property because it never always comes back to lay at one time, so a significant, yeah...
Not every truck leaves and comes back the same day.
30 to 40 different pieces of equipment outside. Some of the small duty stuff gets located inside. A lot of the administrative light duty stuff that you see on the road goes home with the employee at the end of the day, so...
And just another question. You mentioned you're a 24-hour operation. In terms of percentage, how much of that is during the day, that regular business hours, as you put it, and how much would you say is overnight?
I would say about 75 to 80% of our business is normal business working hours.
Okay.
And that fits in for ours also. My trucks are already running in through town quite a bit.
Yeah.
So, we have, behind it, National Eastern, that CNC operation, which is now called Restial, gone through a few acquisitions. We handle the freight out of there, and at one time, the rail yard, when Pan Am was a bit active, we were unloading water off container cars and other things. So, the trucks have been coming through in the general vicinity for four-plus years.
All right, thank you.
Rosemary?
Thank you very much for being here tonight and actually answering a number of the questions that I threw down. One other question that I did have, however, concerned the existing buildings. Is it brief reference that you might be considering economic concessions to make some improvements? But can you explain a little further in terms of whether you would make any changes or improvements on the existing buildings?
The West Main Street buildings will be occupied by our administrative offices, so most, all of the improvements will be done interior-wise, so to fit our needs. The outbuildings would be cleaned up, refurbished, if they need to be painted, but we would add that one structure.
If any of that needed, that the front of West Main Street would make essentially the same?
Would pretty much stay the same, and we would work with your building department, economic community developer, just to make sure it's the right look, it's the right care. We're, as Tony mentioned, the 24 hours, the after-hours business we have, all that work is off-site. So, very seldom will we be coming back to the yard to pick up something, maybe a piece of equipment, but that's, that's it. So, the lights won't be burning 24/7 unless we're, you know, doing some major estimating for a proposal of some sort. The use of the property for us would be pretty much the entire site, because we're mobile. We, if we've, you know, knowing that it's in a pretty substantial flood area, especially the back property, adjacent to the river, you know, we're mobile, and again, most of our equipment is not on-site, but if we would have to repull that back during any type of flooding stage, we can do that. So, we're not concerned with the use of the property the way it exists today.
So, would you be clear to say that, and I was thinking of the outbuildings in the back, there's no plans to make any significant changes on them?
No, not, not this one. We, we need to go, well, Chris is, look, Chris, but from the existing structures...
Are you talking about the metal structures behind the, sorry?
That would be more helpful. Thank you.
If you refer to any of the structures in the back, as you had said in your presentation, you have already addressed the, you know, blocks.
Well, the main White Oak building that's on the frontage has the garage down the backside, and they're talking about adding to that in the rear. What I would be taking are the metal structures that are behind the old brick buildings, the bike shop and whatnot. So, they have a facade. They're somewhat clean. They'd probably be painted, cleaned up, and maybe some additional space across from that, but all new, nice-looking construction. Yes.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Nazem?
Going back to your timeline, the 30,000, 35,000 square foot structure, it's not included in your timeline. Any idea when you'd be looking to start construction and complete construction?
That would probably be, probably, I would say, without, in a preliminary sense, maybe about a year or so after we begin to occupy the building. That's the only thing about this, is it is preliminary. We'd have to get our hands around, you know, the layout of how we would lay in the building. Again, you know, the building is laid out in a way that complements our operations, but, but our operations are not all the same as, you know, everybody else. but our operations are not all the same as, you know, everybody else. So a lot of thought and planning would have to go into that, but I would think a year, around a year after we would start to occupy, we would at least start to put in some, you know, things through site plan and zoning for a new construction behind there.
In your presentation, you addressed support for the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail. Currently, the current alignment, and I know we're still a ways off, would break that trail off, just adjacent to your property. I've been pushing for it to come all the way behind this property. I say your property, apologies, the White Oak property. I've been pushing for it to come all the way behind to the train tracks and up through the center of town. If that were to happen, are you going to be able to provide us the space we need along the river to accommodate the trail?
I think that as we move forward, if we move forward, we would find out what the needs are, and I think that that would be a negotiation process. But I think the answer would be, yes, we could provide, I think, what you're looking for, but we would have to obviously have a discussion. But we're looking to support, so in order to make that happen, we would have to find a compromise, and we would work to find, you know, said compromise.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question?
Madam Chair. If somehow, I mean, I like the timeline that you have, it's pretty understandable, but if for some reason the cleanup gets delayed for some reason, and that affects your timeline for purchase, would that affect your interest in the purchase?
It depends on how long it goes out. We would maintain an interest, because we know how these projects work and how they, you know, the administrative and the bureaucracy to get the brownfield funding, to get the project approved, to get it closed out, to have it then clean, will take some time. So we would maintain a relationship with the city, the town, and to work with you. I say if it's within six months of that timeframe, we're good. If it's in a year, possibly beyond that, that may be a different conversation.
Right, okay, thank you.
I will, I will put a plug and piggyback on that question. If, if the timeline were to be exacerbated, you know, in a, in a long, negative way, I think we would, we would have a different discussion, quite possibly, if there are, you know, other viable opportunities for the company, you know, in full disclosure. But we also, you know, we also are developers, so we would also be able to assist the town of Plainville if that type of a situation came to fruition. So I'd like to say that we could maintain the timeline, be flexible in the timeline, but a major exacerbation in the timeline by multiple years or, you know, would be a different discussion, I think, for a lot of different people. So we are willing to work with the town on many different levels, whether it's a relocation or it's something else. We feel we have the qualifications and the background to talk about the something else if that arose.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Actually, I have a question for Robert. I cannot remember exactly. Can you tell me what the acreage is we're talking about for this property? I can't remember off the top of my head.
It's right around 15 acres.
15, that's what I thought. Thank you very much.
All set? Mr. Lee?
With regards to the cleanup, the, the method used for the cleanup would, in many ways, depend upon what your plans were as far as, for example, capping, or whether we needed to remove the material or whether it would be capped. Do you anticipate as part of your proposal to do any work in the back with regards to repaving or anything along those lines, or would you mostly keep it the way it is right now?
We would, we would plan on paving just from the mobility of our equipment, but we wouldn't want to become party to the transfer of this property if it's not thoroughly cleaned. So we would be hoping that when the property is transferred, that it's now transferred under Connecticut Transfer Act, that there's no liability for us moving forward in any form of that transfer act, transfer. So we would, if, say the soil was, needed to be exhumed, sent over to Phoenix, cleaned, brought back, and it was left, then we could take it from there. We can surely improve upon that clean base and create the pathways that we would need to not only take care of our needs, but also the Heritage Trail.
Yeah, it's a complicated process, so I understand.
It sure is.
The second item is, in doing some evaluation with respect to tax revenue, we did a little research on the personal property and vehicles that, you know, taxes that you're currently paying in Bristol. Would we anticipate that most of that would, in terms of the vehicles and the personal property, would bring, would come to Plainville as well? Or do you think some of that would not?
So to fully answer that question is, you know, we, we have multiple properties that we own, and not just under the Damato construct entity. We have plenty of other entities. So there are strategic assets in Bristol that are immovable. They can't be moved, they will remain, whether that's a lay-down yard, whether that's a fuel facility, whether it could be multiple different things. Those are immovable. We're looking to move the corporate headquarters, which is significant, and a significant amount of the heavy and medium duty equipment. We, you know, in full disclosure, we have other small areas, but I would say that you'd be seeing a majority of that equipment move here as we consolidate the construction operations. Those are really what we're looking to, you know, consolidate. So we're looking at a corporate headquarters and a significant amount of that equipment coming to Plainville, if that kind of alludes to your question.
Yeah, and I'm sure, you know, we could have further discussions.
Understood, yeah.
Thank you.
You all set, Mr. Lee?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Are there any other questions tonight?
I have another question.
Sure.
Just in your proposal, you talk about how the town of Plainville would clean up the property and be the certifying party to Connecticut DEP. Can you just, I'm not sure I have my hands wrapped around that, but can you just explain or provide more details of what you mean specifically by certifying party?
The reason why it stands in limbo now is because nobody wants to come in and purchase it and become party to the environmental condition of the property. That's, right now solely falls on the estate of the Tofflon family. Once somebody would take title or transfers, then you become party to it. They would be responsible for all the sins of the past, but you would still have an obligation of moving forward. Unless the site was totally vetted by the brownfield program and deemed clean, then there's, somebody's going to be on the hook for it. It's going to be the owner of the property at that time. So the city has a unique opportunity to, to possess the property for its tax lien, go to the city, clean it up using the brownfield funds, and then continue to own it, develop it, or transfer it out. And we just want to be the recipient on that transfer after it happens. Otherwise, it gets very complicated, and there's a lot of responsibility and obligations that we're just not ready to take on, because it long lives, that'll be going to the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh generation of the Damato family.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I can help out a little bit there, I believe. As part of our LaRero study, we've developed what's called a RAP, a remedial action plan. That remedial action plan speaks to what needs to get done and where contamination needs to be addressed. If the town acquires, you know, grants to clean up the property based on the remedial action plan, at some point in time when that is completed, the state will sign off and say that they consider the property now clean. We do have a, a pathway of how to get there. Some of it is based upon what the future development looks like, in terms of what kind of costs we'd have to put into it, but what is being looked at is that the town would complete the details, the work that needs to be done under the remedial action plan, the RAP, and then the state would sign off on that and then have the transfer.
The state may impose a land use restriction on the property if it's not totally clean. And, you know, one of the unfortunate casualties of that would be residential. Our use would not fall under that because it's commercial, it's industrial, so.
All right. Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
In regards to the type of equipment you plan to store there, those things have fuel, they have transmission fluid, hydraulic fluid, all kinds of petroleum-based fluids going in and out of these, and when they tend to blow a hose, they tend to dump a ton of fluid on the ground. How do you prepare, how are you prepared to prevent future contamination?
Well, as a, you know, going concern in our industry, you know, we obviously have, you know, hazardous materials, plans, and policies in place. I think we, if we needed some specific deliverables on how to answer that, we could put those together. But I mean, we have a, an entire, safety is big at our company. It's not, safety is not just an accident at a project site, it's global harmonization, it's spills, it's you name it. So most of the repair functions on all those, that equipment happens indoors, okay? And there's provisions made indoors to take, you know, the draining of oil, the draining of fluids. We run a clean operation. Is there always a risk that it could happen outside? There's a risk for anybody. It's all about what you do to prevent the risk and how you remediate or act on something happening. So the best I can say is that, you know, Damato Construction takes any and all precautions in our maintenance program, in the movement of hazardous materials. If hazardous materials show up on the site, there really isn't a need for that stuff. You know, that's, that's just part of our daily safety culture and operations at our company. So I don't know if I can answer that question in as much detail as you'd like to, other than tell you that, you know, that's, that's a focus, that's a symptom of our industry. We understand what that is, what that does, and we mitigate, you know, accordingly. I will say that we have an excellent record of never having to report to deep, you know, a reportable spill. We've never had any type of, you know, deep acted-on remediation or emergency cleanup or anything of that nature, and that kind of lends to the type of operation and the focus on cleanliness, housekeeping, and safety that we do at our company.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That would also go a part of our site plan approval process, because we would be showing where our impervious surfaces will be and how we will be parking our vehicles to help mitigate anything that could happen, will happen, would happen. I mean, it's, it could happen. But it would be on impervious surfaces, bituminous or concrete versus just laid out on dirt and grass.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from the council or Mr. Lee right now? Everybody, everybody all set?
I'm all set.
Anything else? Okay. All right. Thank you very, very much for coming this evening and answering our questions. There may be more as we start to learn more about what we're doing here, but we appreciate your time, and thank you again for everything.
On behalf of the Damato family and Chris Myers and his group, we appreciate the opportunity. At no disrespect, we are going to leave the building, only because our proposal, as we see, is totally different. You know, we're moving here, our company, and they have development plans, and we wish the Manafort team the best of luck in their presentation and your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Is there any separate public and ask questions?
I don't think she heard you. You might want to-
All right, we're going to take a brief pause right now in between presenters, and we'll return in a few moments. Thank you. All right, it's a, it's a few minutes before 7 o'clock, but if everybody is ready from the perspective of the next presenters, if the council is ready for our next, our next round, I think we'll go ahead and do that. And we have first up, Tabitha. Hello, Tabitha.
How are you? Good. Okay. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Town Council Members, thank you for inviting us here tonight to present our proposal for the redevelopment of the former White Oak Construction Parcel. My name is Tabitha Wazorko Manafort, owner of TWM Development, a company whose commitment to the greater Plainville community has manifested in the acquisition and renovation of over 40 private homes, as well as its most recent purchase and refurbishment of the former Parsons Properties, now home to TWM and Company, as well as our used motorcycle shop, Powerhouse Motorsports. I am proud to be teaming up with Mark Lovely and Tony Valenti from Newport Realty Group, Justin Manafort Senior with Manafort Brothers Incorporated, architect Tom Arcary from QANM Architecture, and Brandon Handfield from Yentick River Consultants, sorry. QANM Architecture is a firm specializing in the planning, programming, and design of community-based spaces. Tom Arcary, a principal of the firm, has 26 years of experience in the architectural field. His knowledge in this field is vast and includes designing and building mixed-use, industrial, commercial, and residential developments. Brandon, owner of Yentick River Consultants, has more than 20 years of experience in the civil engineering field. With a broad knowledge of his field, Brandon has, among other areas, specialized in residential, commercial, and industrial site development. He provides project management, design, permitting, and construction administrative services. Mark and Tony of Newport Realty Group have been mainstays in the development industry for years. Their most recent project includes the acquisition and redevelopment of a 27,000-square-foot mixed-use building in Berlin, already attracting tenants to the commercial spaces. In addition, Newport was named preferred developer for the project named Steel Center at Farmington Avenue, located at the Berlin train station, and, when completed, will offer 76 market-rate apartments and over 25,000 square feet of commercial space. Justin is the executive vice president of Manafort Brothers Incorporated and is responsible and has daily direct oversight of all Manafort operations. A nationally recognized leader in the construction and demolition industry, Manafort Brothers is a 100-plus-year-old family company here in Plainville, with a long legacy of commitment to our community. One of Manafort's most notable development projects has been the old Plainville Junior High, which Manafort Brothers purchased from the town and developed into a 40,000-square-foot office space. In addition, several other Manafort projects include demolition, remediation, and structural reinforcement of Hearthstone Castle in Danbury, Connecticut, as well as the redevelopment of the former Norwich State Hospital, now known as Preston Riverwalk in Preston, Connecticut. The pride and excitement I feel about this potential project are immense. It is our hope that you recognize that with this proposal, we have not only responded to the council's particular development requests, but also have presented a plan that reflects our vested interest in the town of Plainville and its people. We are a solid, hard-working team, and it will be a privilege to collaborate on a project that will bring economic growth to Plainville, as well as endless opportunities for our town. Thank you. And with that, I'd like to ask Tom to come up. Thank you.
Hello. Great. Good evening. My name is Tom Arcary, as Tab so kindly introduced me. And most importantly, I grew up here in Plainville and lived here for many, many years, went to school here. When I was approached by their team to come up with a solution for the redevelopment of this site, I was entranced with the concept of finding a solution that is transformative for the downtown of Plainville. Plainville, for years, has tried and tried to rejuvenate, revitalize the center, but there's a lack of critical mass of residential in the center of the town to provide services, to provide support to the services. This is a walk map of downtown Plainville and the proposed development, and you can see highlighted throughout the center, throughout Whiting Street, East Main Street, all of the services that are located within short walking distance of the proposed sites, bakeries, cafes, bars, diner, post office, churches, even funeral homes, although I don't think we'll be walking there. But the idea is that the location is ideal, it's perfect, for a walkable, sustainable lifestyle center. When I say lifestyle center, I talk about a living, working, breathing place where everyone can have all of their services. There are precedents for this all over the state of Connecticut, and Blue Back Square is a much bigger precedent. But I think that developing this site in that fashion really will invigorate Plainville and that this is the perfect site, the perfect opportunity to do so. This site, at this site, we can accomplish a number of tasks to make it successful on multiple levels. This is a blow-up plan of the site. So in simple terms, we can add services within walking distance of the center. Our plan proposes the redevelopment of the existing structures. That would be the original White Oak building, which would be offices, and then the industrial, which would remain as industrial tenant suites. We would upgrade the street fronts and reinforce the streetscape corridor along West Main. We would add a small amount of retail commercial at the street to, again, reinforce and build up the street wall along West Main. wall along West Main. To the rear of the site, we would propose adding three apartment buildings to bring 160, approximately 160 residential apartments, to the back of the site. In red, we would propose a new medical office building right in the center of town. The development team, Newport Realty, does a significant amount of medical office work, and some of their tenants have been very interested in this particular region, this location, for numerous years. The development would include a number of pedestrian connections to downtown. The first of which would be opening a corridor in the Whiting Oak Block so that all of the residents and all of the business patrons, everyone who uses this development, can walk through the block directly to downtown. Number two, we would reinforce and we would create the bike path. One of the benefits to this is it puts our proposed town center, it creates a reception area for everyone who's using that bike path, right in the heart of the development. We would propose to leave one structure, which is the Quonset Hut structure in the back. We would renovate that for community services. In between the structures would be recreation amenities for the residential, and then we would propose a boulevard entrance to the development with a loop road that would provide public parking and access, not only to the services on this site, but also within pedestrian access to downtown. The faces of the existing buildings would all get renovated, and we would create new facades at the rear of the site so that the office spaces would have their own entrance plaza. Finally, we would put the floodplain, the floodway, to ecologically-friendly use as a town resource. We would make this a town lawn, and there would be public access to the rear of the whole site with overlooks, and potentially, in sort of the grand vision, a public focal space, either pavilion, small bandshell, performance space, ultimately make this an outdoor resource right within walking distance of the center of town. This development represents between $25 and $30 million of construction hard cost improvements right in downtown. It will also create a new precedent for all future development in the town of Plainville to follow. This is a large-scale plan that shows the buildings that would remain in dark green, and then all of the new structures in teal. You can see the floodway zone and the remainder of the improvements. One of the unique things about our solution is we believe that this will be an environmentally-friendly solution to this site. There is no other solution, no other approach to our solution than to completely clean the site, environmentally remediate the entire site, take everything off the site. When this development is done, the site will be clean and certified for residential use. One of the ways we will do that potentially is by capping the site. We will raise the grade of the site where all of the internal structures are, so that those structures are up and out of the floodplain. The benefit of this is, as opposed to having amenities that are within the floodplain that could be impacted, could absorb any sorts of contaminants, all of the new development will be up out of that floodplain. One of the things that you might not have realized about this site is that the floodway is actually one component, but the remainder of the site itself is actually in the 100-year floodplain. So, this site does and has been flooded in the past. By raising this, we would remove any obstacles or any opportunity for that floodway to be contaminated, that waterway to be contaminated in the future during flood events. Having done a number of these developments, we've included some precedence in our proposal of the Taika architecture that we envision for this place, for this neighborhood, residential in nature, colonial in nature, complementary to the other structures that are in Plainville. Again, a precedent for future development. Lost my train of thought. Okay. So, that summarizes the proposed development for the site. I think we, oh, got my train of thought back. So, when we talk about architecture and development of the site, I think the most important thing is, the way we approach these projects is in a collaborative manner. We, as a team, view this as a partnership with the town of Plainville. We are not here saying, "This is your project, and it's going to look exactly like that." In all of the communities we've worked together, and Mark and Newport Realty and I have done almost a dozen projects together, we believe it's essential to have a working relationship with the town. This is just a preliminary vision. Ultimately, we want the town of Plainville to help us determine what the final solution is going to be. And we think that's important, because while we have ideas for what this site can be, as representatives of the community and patrons of the community for the majority of your lives, I'm willing to bet you have a better idea of what the final solution, or at least a good idea about how to help us mold and craft a solution that will just be outstanding. So this is our proposal. We think it stands on its merits, and frankly, we're very excited to present the idea. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to sort of a discussion, and hopefully we can address a number of questions and create some dialogue.
Tom, I just wanted to add a couple of quick things. Just, us as a team, I mean, Tom did a great job of putting together our plan, putting our ideas on paper and making it all come together as one unit, and, you know, great effort on everybody's part. But I just, I wanted to just say as a, from, between Manafort Brothers, my Tabitha and my family, wife, we live here in town. We love it here. We're, you know, we've been here, our kids are here, and we, you know, we're excited about this project. We want to make it a, we want to make it a great, great place for the town. And so, for us, it's a, you know, we look at it as a, as a, as a development project, but we're also, we also live here, so it's, it's important to us to make sure that it, that it gets built and gets created correctly. So, well, thank you. We'll go back to questions.
Ready for questions?
I am.
Okay. I'll open up the floor for questions. Does anybody have any questions to start with our second round?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I ask a few questions?
Please go.
West Main Street's pretty narrow from the corner at Whiting up until the firehouse. Pier Street can't handle traffic flow that could potentially be 160 units. Have you done any idea, any traffic studies, any idea what the impact will be to the surrounding areas?
A detailed traffic study will have to be done. Based on our other projects that we've, we've done in the past, there will certainly be an increase of traffic at the entrance and exit of the site. It isn't 160 trips at one time. The reality is, is there's very detailed calculations that demonstrate those trips are distributed throughout the day. One of the nice things about this approach is it opens the site up for communal use and communal parking as well. People that live here and leave and go to work during the day, open up parking spots or shared parking spots for communal use thereafter. Any, you know, approval process that we pursue through the town, planning and zoning, would absolutely include a detailed traffic assessment wherein we would dive into the nuts and bolts of what the exact trips are and the timing of that is.
You mentioned a medical building. Just up on the corner of North Washington Street, there's an empty medical building. So why would there be demand here when we can't get any tenants in the one that's half a mile up the street?
Because there is demand, but the reality is, is the benefit of our team is you're bringing proven developer to the team that has specific relationships. Mark Lovely's development history, and you can actually talk to the other towns he's done developments in, Mark doesn't do his developments without the tenants and tenant arrangements in place. In all of the places he's done his medical office developments, he's had tenant interest. So the benefit to this project team is that Mark is going to bring those tenants.
And then just, it's kind of hard to see from this angle. Are you proposing the boulevard entrance, and I understand it's a work in progress and it can change, but are you proposing it aligns with Pier Street and take the fire department parking lot as part of that project?
In this vision concept, we are proposing realignment of the boulevard with Pier Street from a traffic perspective that makes sense. This is just a concept that would require, again, a partnership with the town. There would be a land swap. We would take a little bit of this parking area and give the town parking back on the other side of the development. But we think if that's the main entrance of a development, it should be aligned with Pier Street, and that should be a viable intersection. Having that sort of jagoff, realistically, would have to be addressed. If we didn't address it in our vision, I almost guarantee planning and zoning would recommend that.
I was just, because I'm against taking the firehouse parking 100%, because people go there to vote, and they're not going to know to go park behind the firehouse, and there's senior citizens that aren't going to go park behind a medical building or wherever. And I worry about the Pier Street traffic flow. But I was just curious, because I can't see it from here. It's hard to see. So that's why I was just curious as to what your plan was. So, thank you for clarifying.
Thanks. Again, it's important to stress, this is a vision, it's an idea.
Any other questions for the council?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So Jesse had mentioned the 160 apartment units, and I have some concern about that too. Mostly, it doesn't seem like you have a lot of parking there, and I know you mentioned public parking, but if you're going to be renting 160 units, most people would want at least two parking spaces for an apartment that they're renting. If they have a two-bedroom apartment building, they would want at least two spaces. Plus, you have to also give space for visitors to park. So I don't understand where all those parking spaces are going to go. I mean, did I miss it?
Maybe. It's a very good question, though, because there actually is a rule-of-thum rubric that you have 1.5 parking spaces per market-rate apartment. This proposed plan has 392 parking spaces distributed throughout the site. One of the strengths of the plan is it boasts a significant amount of parking, but it doesn't look that way. We're not creating a sea of parking for the development.
Okay.
If I can expound upon that, I'd also note that the proposal calls for 160 apartments. That's a target number. That would be a mix of one- and two-bedroom apartments. Probably the majority at this point, we envision is one-bedroom apartments, maybe a ratio of 65/35 or 70/30 towards, favored towards one-bedroom apartments.
Okay. The other question I have too is, you didn't really provide a timeline for how you think things are going to go. Do you have something like that in mind?
Yeah, so I can talk about that. So, from a phasing perspective, the concept would be to acquire the property, start to clean up, renovate the existing structures, and get the re, commercial-industrial tenant in this portion of the building, renovate that structure. The second phase, and during the first phase, we do cleanup and ecological work. The second phase would be to focus, start on the residential apartments. Residential apartments would be built one at a time and rented as demand develops. So ultimately, at the end of the day, the market will, will determine how quickly those, those get built. Concurrently, the professional medical office building would be developed. So, total time development from start to finish, I don't have a number for you, but, you know, development of a, construction development of an apartment building is about 16 to 18 months. Renovation of the front portions of the building can be done within six months. The ecological work still has to be determined, depending on the ultimate funding source for that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes. Go ahead, Rosemary. Sorry. There's echoing going on here.
Just thinking back to, you know, entrance and exits, you would be maintaining that narrow entrance near the railroad tracks as well, if that would be limited. I think it's like deliveries and, how do you see that being used? Obviously, the boulevard would be the maintenance as, as we've envisioned it right now.
So that's a good question. We would maintain that right away because it exists, and it would provide sort of backdoor access to the, the commercial-industrial tenants. The vision for those spaces is to subdivide the big industrial building, turn it into rental spaces for carpenter, builder, contractor, small pickup truck, like box truck, truck-type contractors. This would be a service entrance for that alone. It would be gated and have secure access to that area. We would actually create a front door to that development on the front. We'd create a new front on the backside. That would be sort of the commercial entrance to these businesses. So if these businesses have a little front office, it would be here. Patrons would actually use the boulevard, activate that area, and, you know, visit the contractors there.
Yeah, I did notice that you're going to be putting really a full front on that part, that would be the industrial complex.
That's correct.
So I assume that the intent is to have that really plugged in with residential parts of the development?
The goal would not only be to create a walkable development to downtown, but internally, this would be a walkable development. So we're creating a streetscape around the full loop. We're creating a neighborhood.
And just get back to the first part of the question. So that narrow entrance there near the railroad tracks would accommodate some of the in-and-out for the industrial complex?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All set? Anybody else?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Just, can you talk about the cleanup? You know, is this something where you're looking to take the lead with help from the town, or is this something that you're looking for the town to clean up and then hand over once that's completed?
So that's a good question. I'll start. The goal is, again, we consider it a partnership, collaborative effort. The town has the resources to potentially pursue grants to help clean up the site, but the design team and its professionals would take the lead in terms of guidance and cleanup. So we'd like to explore options to pursue potential grants to help with the cleanup portion of the site. Either way, that site work cleanup component will be accomplished as a part of the project. Either way, that site work cleanup component will be accomplished as a part of the project.
Okay. Another, can I ask another question? Just in regards to the, you know, number of units you're proposing, is there any qualifications as far as, you know? And I forgot that there is a phrase. It's not 55 and over. There's a different phrase that I think we're...
Age restricted.
Age restricted or, you know, low income, affordable housing. Is there any criteria you guys would need to meet?
So that's, that again, is a good question. There's no requirement to develop age-restricted housing. However, a portion of the development could be age-restricted. Again, that's something we would work with the town on. This development would be a privately financed, market rate housing development. Mark and Tony and Justin would, and Tab would not be looking for any state subsidy to build or construct, let's say, part of this as dedicated affordable housing. However, that doesn't mean there won't be an affordable housing component. That's the, within the discussions that we have about how many apartments would fit within what income ranges. I think that's a discussion we could have here in town. Again, a partnership. Why not talk to Sean Cohen and say, what is the need? What is the demand? What can we do to help meet those goals here in the town?
And just one more question regarding the commercial industrial tenant section, I'm going to call it. How much, how much, how much do you think you need to spend there to? You know, when you say you're going to renovate it, what does that mean exactly?
Well, it's a multi-step process. So first is cleanup and abatement. So within the building, there's hazardous materials that need to be removed from the building. The building will be demolished or the interior of the building will be cleaned, demolished, shot blasted, and tenant separation walls will be put up. So they'll be developed as what's referred to in the industry as vanilla boxes. Then, as each tenant comes on board, they'll have specific requirements for layouts, infrastructure within each space. So the renovation can change based on which tenants come to use the space.
All right. And just one follow-up. With West Main Street, you talked early about doing some work right along the street. What, can you expand on that? Like, you know, you talked about the buildings and the frontage. What else can you add to that?
So I don't want to make any promises that get me in trouble with the developer.
I understand.
You know how this goes, right?
It's a vision. I understand.
But one of the benefits we have is that Tony is one of the property owners in that block. So the idea would be to revitalize the streetscape. It could be as simple as repainting and, you know, redoing the window fronts in some of those structures. It could be as a part of the development, recreating the, the streetscape and the sidewalk. I think sidewalk pedestrian access is crucial to our development. And I know that, you know, Plainville has put significant efforts into the streetscape improvements downtown. I don't see why those types of improvements won't continue and be mirrored in the new development.
Thank you. I'm all set.
All set?
Yes.
Any other questions from the council?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mazo.
Thank you. I was along the lines of what Chris was asking about the five buildings on West Main Street. I know we can't speak for, well, we can speak for maybe one of the property owners, but, you know, you might have a historic building in there. That Oddfell's building is older than the town. You know, I, I don't know what kind of, I guess my question is this. If those property owners don't want anything done, they don't want the buildings painted, they don't want to clean up the streetscape and, and help, what's the impact to your development if that stays the way it is and is blocking this new development? And what's the impact to them with this new development behind you? You know what I mean? Is, are you going to have a hard time getting tenants because they're looking at the back of buildings built in the 1800s that might not have been cared for at the highest level? The same with, you know, what's the impact for those people who own those buildings, that live in those buildings now when there's all of a sudden 160 residential units behind them? How do we bridge that gap?
Well, that's a good question. It's a mouthful. I think, again, when we talk about partnership, it's about working with the existing tenants that are in the development and trying to work with them to be a part of this new neighborhood. I find it hard to believe they, they wouldn't be receptive to the concept of improving their streetscape as a part of the project, particularly if that's a project component as opposed to their component. As far as developing the structures behind, this existing structure is currently there. We'd be removing the structure in between and creating more space for them, providing access behind those structures for those businesses. So in a sense, this development will yield a significant improvement for access to those facilities. And as far as the residences go, you know, the residences are going to be new and state-of-the-art, special. They will look onto specific green space and amenity space. There'll be common amenity space, exercise space, meeting spaces, community lounge. These are not only going to meet one of the unique demands that we see in the area for apartment space or new apartment space, but they're going to make this space special. So I find it hard to believe that what we'd be proposing is all-new development would be looked upon by the few neighbors there as detrimental.
Those building, you don't perceive those buildings out front limit the viability and the marketability of these, of this development, you know, becoming a revenue producer.
Hi. Good evening, Town Council. Tony Valenti, Principal with Newport Realty Group. As Tom briefly mentioned, I do own one of the small properties on West Main Street. And, you know, from an impact perspective with a development like this behind my building, I guess we'll, we'll call it, and I can only speak for myself, very positively impactful today, tomorrow, and for, you know, many years to come. We keep using the word partnership and outreach, you know, with our neighbors. It only makes sense for us as developers based on the, the challenge and the, and the size of the investment that we're willing to make in Plainville that we will outreach to our neighbors. And I, I think they'd be, you know, probably willing and should not be, you know, have any, any, any pushback at all to help us improve the look of their buildings. And there's ways that we can kind of think and talk through that. Some other communities have matching grant funds. I don't remember if Plainville offers that, but, you know, what's on Main Street now, although some of the buildings may be old and tired, they're gorgeous buildings. The last thing we want to think about is to take those buildings down. But there's an easy way to incorporate those buildings into the rest of our development. Second quick point from a developer, developer's perspective, you know, whether Plainville knows this or not, we're, we're in the business every day looking at real estate. There are so few sites like this available where you can actually launch this large of a development. Large, not overwhelming large, large to fit the community. So, you know, we have identified that these are hard to find, these properties. So we have kind of a hidden gem. And I guess the third point, you know, based on Tom's presentation of all the density of this particular development, Mark and I have a bunch of comments and sayings that we use every day, cliches we use every day. Commerce breeds commerce. You know, I, I know what you can charge for rent on West Main Street for commercial space. I know what you can charge for residential tenants on West Main Street in Sullington. I'm sorry, in, in, in Plainville. With this additional commerce, I can only see us kind of raising the demand and the rates for all the property owners in that market. Maybe eliminate or reduce some of the turnover that we see in some of the commercial tenants. Because once you go vacant in, in downtown Plainville, you kind of stay vacant for a while. Not, not a good equation for a developer. I've been fortunate, we, we work with our tenants. Mark and I have zero vacancy in any of our properties. And we're somewhere around 125, 140,000 square feet of space because we work with our mom and pops. We work with our residential tenants. It's just the way that we do business. So I think the key thing I want to leave you with is just that commerce breeds commerce in this kind of development. And we would respect the neighbors. Thank you.
Mark touched on, Tony touched on something that I didn't mention in my presentation. And that's one of the ways we envision this as revitalizing or helping to revitalize the center is economic stimulus. Not only will this 25 to 30 million dollars of hard cost infrastructure generate upwards beyond $300,000 a year of tax revenue when it's fully completed, there's no way to account for the amount of economic stimulus that this will bring to all of the other patrons in the downtown area. If you now have 100-plus, you know, residential households within walking distance of those services, you have a number of new businesses, medical office business and their patrons now coming to the center as well as the additional tenants. The number associated with that far outweighs the tax revenue for the community.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? I, I do have one. How's your dad, Tom?
You mean that Tom Arcari? For anyone who wants to know, I'm not that Tom Arcari. My dad is great. Thank you for asking.
I'm at my best.
I will.
Tom, I have a question regarding the, the design and the inclusion of a medical office building. What do you base that on in terms of need and future needs of our community to have a medical office building on that site? We do have several medical office facilities in, in a fairly close radius of Plainville, one of which is up on Journey Road. UConn is not very far. New Britain Hospital and there are, there's a medical office complex in Plainville as well. So what decision, what, what do you foresee happening that that would be a good addition to that project?
I'm actually going to turn that over to Mark Lovely.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. Mark Lovely with Principal from Newport Realty. I own quite a bit of medical office space right now on West Street in downtown Plansville and Sullington where I have Central Connecticut Hospital. I have UConn Medical Center, CCOG, and some other specialties in there. And I've had them ask me in the past, do you have anything in Plainville that we could move to? What we basically do a little bit different than other office developers. We don't just throw the office up and hope to get tenants. We build out the space for what they want. So what happens is they're not restricted to come into a building that's already built. We work with them, design the space, design what we need to. I built buildings in Bristol. I built buildings in Cheshire for medical office space that were all filled. My, all of my buildings in Sullington are 100% filled. So we just don't throw up a building and let it sit there vacant. We would work this and get it over 50% filled before we built the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
For that. And I have one more question. What is your projected value of this project when it's all done?
A gazillion.
Sound like your father now. So you have to have a budget. You have to have, you know, a plan of developing it and what you plan to spend to develop that site. Can you give us an idea of what we're going to be, what we should be knowing about that?
Well, I can tell you that the projected hard costs, the, the physical costs are specifically between 23 and 25 million dollars. I'm right off the bat to construct all of this. I know that there's additional soft costs associated with that. That's why I use a range of 25 to 30 million dollars to get in. As far as future value and how that, you know, how it matriculates for value, I don't have a good answer for, for you on that. I could ask Tony if you could project that, maybe?
Again, Tony Valenti. You know, we're going to have a substantial personal property tax. We'll, we'll have the, the cost of construction, as Tom had mentioned, 23 to 25 million dollars plus some soft costs. You know, I think to get a, a valuation today versus valuation tomorrow, it's two separate numbers, or for tomorrow, two separate numbers. You know, we're probably a $40 million project, you know, based on what we call capitalization rates, which is a factor of, of net operating income based on, on what a property would sell in the open market. You know, future, I think we have an election coming up here in a couple of few weeks that may impact positively or negatively cap rate. So that number may go north of $40 million. But as we mentioned earlier, we're, we're going to phase this so, so make sure we're all on the same page. You know, we, we can't build and we can't get an apartment building financed until the first one's full. And then we'll go ahead or full or, or we see a lot of action on it, then we can go to the second one. Same thing with the medical offices, market comment that we're not, we're not going to build on speculation. No, no good for any of us. And number two, you can't. You typically cannot get financing for that. So we, we do like that phased approach. Same thing we're doing at our development by the train station in Berlin. And it allows us to take, I don't want to call them small bites. They're large bites, but there's multiple large bites. We, we can provide a harder total market value if we need to. Not a problem.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add? We certainly have a good discussion of this proposal.
Madam Chair. Oh, I'm sorry. I just, a question for Robert Moore. This kind of development, have we started to look at what the impact is on school and town services?
One or two-bedroom apartments bring, historically have resulted in very little if any impact on school-aged children.
Town services are still going to be impacted.
I'm assuming these are going to be private roads?
You know, libraries are going to be impacted, senior services are going to be impacted, things like that. I mean, there's going to be some impact. We must have some idea. Or we should find out during the process what, what the estimated, I understand the tax revenue is going to outweigh the cost, but we should know what the future costs are going to look like.
Well, I will tell you, you know, you mentioned a library, for example. Our library is sufficient to handle additional patrons. It's, it's much larger than, for example, the, the library in Sullington and others. So I, I don't see it impacting services to any great degree, but it's certainly something that could be looked into.
Thank you.
How's that? Does anybody else have anything? Yes, Rose.
You had gone to your question, the question of the demand for the partners to residential, probably the K D that you would be facing in construction. But how can we determine the need for residential? And for a particular type of, you know, two-bedroom apartments?
Good evening. Good evening. We've actually looked at, with the project we're doing in Berlin right now, we actually have a waiting list for the first building that is not even built yet. If you look at the demographic of Plainville, there hasn't really been any new apartment buildings been in, built in town for quite some time. So we feel that the demand is there for the product, or else we wouldn't be putting this many units at the property. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to ask? Nope? Chris, Rosemary, are you all set? Okay. Okay. Jesse, you all sat there? All right. Again, once again, thank you very much from the, from me as well as the council and the town staff that's prepared us for this evening. We certainly learned a lot. We appreciate all the time and thoughtfulness that has been put into this presentation. Well, the next steps, just for everybody's information, the town council is having their regular meeting on Monday and we were going to be having an executive session as well. So this, some other issues may come out of that, some other questions may come forward. But the next step is on Monday, we're going to be meeting and having an opportunity to probably talk about some of these things. So once again, I want to thank everybody involved. We appreciate your time and all of your thoughtfulness and preparing for tonight. And I want to thank the council for your questions as well. Certainly helps us understand some of the things that we're going to be looking at going forward. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you for the opportunity and good evening.
Of course. Okay. If there are no other questions or concerns, I will ask for a motion to adjourn from the council.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second. Call us in favor. Thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.